30 has arrived. I would like to call the Tuesday, June 29, 2021 Committee to hold to the order. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you take the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Philginsy.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman Decenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Are there any presentations?
No, sir.
No presentations, okay. I'll accept the motion to approve the committee meeting minutes.
So moved, Mr. Secretary.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have our ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. Mr. Clerk, would you read?
2020-464, 21, 2021-211, 2021-239.
Mr. Chairman, it would be fine to withdraw, 2024-64. That's a resolution that's now passed that, if you recall, the six-month time.
Second.
And there's no, it's appropriate to withdraw it.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Okay, it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Signify. All right, thank you.
64.
Mr. Clerk, would you read the ordinance from C W L P?
Will do. C W L P, 2021-244, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing execution of contract UE 21-0270, distribution transformer alliance with Drybar Electric Incorporated, Fletcher Reinhardt Company, and Anexer Power Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed $14,97,854.20 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. It's been properly moved in second to move this to consent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2021-245, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Engineered Pump Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $387,415 for repair upgrade of Unit 4's circulating pump and authorizing a supplemental appropriation for $387,415 to cover said repair for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been properly moved to consent and seconded. All those in favors, any discussion first? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2021-246, an ordinance accepting and authorizing the execution of a two-year extension to proposal number UE 18-12 with Ozinga Cement Incorporated for purchase, removal, and beneficial use of fly ash from Dahlmond 4 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. Don't we have a contractual agreement with our coal hauler to dispose of the ash? Is this a different contract, Corporation Council?
This is, I'm actually not sure about that. We do have an agreement for the fly ash, for the dry ash that goes back and is stored at the mine, but Scott can probably address the detail of this.
So, yes, we, all the bottom ash that we generate gets hauled back to the mine. This is the fly ash that gets beneficial reuse. So, it's two separate agreements.
Oh, it's two separate types of ash?
Two separate types of ash.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
2021-247, an ordinance approving payment to Troxel &amp; Company in the amount not to exceed $3,600,000 for property tax, property insurance policy for 42 of city properties for a one-year term and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $919,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to consent. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Discussion? Go ahead.
Could we get an update on how the policy is going and any changes to the policy and any premium amounts? Thanks. Thank you.
Quick summary. We added, so the current policy, we added about $200 million for the three peakers that are not insured this year. In addition, we increased our scheduled values for the filter plant addition, about $120 million. So, our coverage went from, where'd it go? Eight hundred and, hmm, it was in my notes somewhere, 879 million of insured value or insured property to 1.1 billion of insured property. So, there's about a 20-some percent increase in insured value and our premiums have went up about 24%. Part of that's driven by coal. They don't want to insure coal plants, so that's kind of what we're looking at.
Who don't want to insure coal?
Any insurance company. All the, so Troxels have sent us to about 20 insurance companies trying to get them, and over the last two years, there's been five companies will take parts of it and fully insure us. Currently, StarTech is the lead. They did 42.8% last year. They're doing 42.8% again this year. And then, we don't have all the bids back in, so this is an estimate of the 3.6 million. We have to have an ordinance ready so that we can pay the premium when they come in. But Troxels estimating that's probably going to be a little high from what they're seeing right now based on what we've seen, the bids we have seen.
So, this ordinance is a to not, do not exceed this amount?
Do not exceed, yep.
Okay.
Scott, to follow on, and if you don't have this information tonight, maybe you can circulate it to us. Do you have the premium amounts that we paid in the past for the insured value? And I understand what you're saying. We're insuring more property than we have in the past, and we've also got a claim history that doesn't help us any.
No, it hasn't been pretty.
But could we still have that premium information?
Yeah. For how many years do you want?
Just the most recent.
Just the most recent. Okay, Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think, I don't imagine this, the, what, nine, eight or nine million dollar claim that we had against, you know, that we had paid helped our rates any.
No, it didn't.
I think we're fortunate even to be able to get insured, given our history. I think, I don't know if it's the same company, but in the last, what, 15 years, we've, we've had claims of, well, about eight million. What, I think the one a few years back was like six million and then...
That, that one was, that claim in 2016 for 33, there was only a small portion of that because the majority of that was on GE.
Okay, yeah.
And then we had a...
And then we had the, the big claim way back, so we're fortunate that we're able to even get, get it insured this time.
I did check with a couple other utilities, local, small ones around us. They have the same problem we have. They don't have the, all the, all the claim history, but they, they're still, it's four or five, or four or five companies that they're piecing together 100% coverage. It's, it's just the, the industry of coal. Nobody wants it.
Okay. Alderman Donilon.
Thank you, Chair. Scott is unrelated to this specific ordinance, but related to the topic of this ordinance.
I have learned to understand GE much better, Scott, and get familiar with the way he talks. I need information to help.
Thank you, Lord.
I don't know what that was. Wow. Where I was going with this is, I know that in the commercial market that the cyber liability insurance is becoming extremely difficult for public entities to get.
Yes.
So, I'd like to have a conversation with you and or Doug about that offline here.
Yep.
Just wanted to mention it here so that we could have that conversation later. Thank you.
We will reach out to you. Thank you.
Another question, Scott. You mentioned that in the past, we did not insure the peaker plants, for example, the Interstate.
Interstate.
Plant, which is a natural gas startup. What was the logic in the past that we chose not to insure those plants?
Last year was the only year we didn't insure them.
The only year we did not?
The only year we did not.
Okay.
And we could not get them to cover it. There were some, so the email that went out today, there were some recommendations they had. We had not followed through with all those recommendations, and one of them was on Interstate, and we did the testing they wanted, and you've seen the results from the email today. So, that's why they wouldn't insure it. There were some outstanding recommendations on them that we hadn't done. So, we completed all of them this year.
Was that part of the cost of the increase is because we did get those underneath the coverage?
Yes. That was, that's part of the, there's about $320 million total of additional insured property.
Okay.
It's the three peakers in the addition to the filter plant.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public Works, 2021-249, an ordinance reaffirming the authorizing of an annexation agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois and Bathe Chosse for the property located at 25 Westwood Lane.
Motion for debate?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Alderman. Just want to be clarified. Is this the property owner requesting this annexation, Mayor?
Yes, this is a voluntary. And, and you may recall, just very briefly, the council had previously adopted these. However, there was a issue with the, one of the notices, so we had to reissue the notice. That's why it's indicating reaffirming the previous vote. But this is a voluntary annexation with an annexation agreement, and both should be, properly be placed on debate.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2021-250, an ordinance reaffirming the annexation of certain described real property located at 25 Westwood Lane.
Motion for debate?
Second.
It's been motioned in second to move this to debate. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2021-251, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution
of a contract number PW 22-04-19 with PH Broughton &amp; Sons Incorporated to furnish construction of the Chatham Road overlay project in an amount not to exceed $1,478,282 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to debate, and I'll explain why.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved in second to send this to debate. Discussion from Alderman McMenamin?
This is a real popular ordinance, and thank you, Mayor, for helping us on this. Public Works has done a really outstanding job in reconfiguring this project several times and just again this week. This, as introduced, this ordinance includes the remaining part of Ward 7 for the Chatham Road. It includes all of the Ward 8 portion of Chatham Road. And Mayor Langfeller wanted to also, if possible, include as much of Ward 9 that we can get included in this contract. So, our Public Works Director, Nate Bottom, just came in and he's got a revised contract amount for 1.78, which I think is the maximum we can do for an amended contract. Nate, you can explain this better than I can. So, we've got an amendment for this ordinance tonight.
Okay.
And Alderman Donilon, if you've got the language, please make the amendment.
Yeah, Alderman Donilon.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Alderman, and thank you, Chair. I, I just want to thank everybody for their interest in this project. I got a call last night from Alderman Redpath and others that had heard about this swirling around. You know, at times, even the way this was originally submitted, that, you know, it was going to basically go north up to Jeanette Lane was great for everyone because even though the citizens of Ward 9 and the boundaries of Ward 9 do not go further south on Chatham Road from Monroe Street, believe it or not, I've heard many, many times, as I know the Mayor has, about the condition of Chatham Road. So, the fact that we're able to add on, go, not, not stop halfway between Washington and Jefferson, take it all the way up to Jefferson, that would be for an additional $309,982. It just makes sense geographically, logistically, and as the Director pointed out to me on the phone earlier, it could even save money. So, I just appreciate everybody's consideration and support. It makes money. It's going to, we're going to get, we're going to get the work done. The plan was to do it next year, but it's going to be done for less. Director, if that's okay, Chair.
That's correct. We got phenomenal prices. You know, they were 1.478. The next lowest bidder was 2.183 million, which, and that number was fairly close to the normal prices we get. However, with, with these phenomenal unit prices, it kind of makes sense to get it done, and it'll save us 100 to a couple hundred thousand dollars possibly to do it this year.
Okay. Any more, just, okay, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. Nate, again, I'd like to thank you for all the work that you and your staff have put into this. Obviously, I hear enough about Chatham Road, the concerns, people whose cars have been damaged in the potholes. There has been some discussion about the, the back and forth between the city and Leland Grove. You explained to me with a lot of detail, and I really appreciate it, the, the level of cooperation and work that you at your office and, and you go into with, with Leland Grove. So, can you just kind of, just kind of give us a, a summary of what, what you were talking about with that?
Yeah, well, we've done a few I G As.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should probably just say, obviously, there are concerns about Leland Grove getting their portion of Chatham Road finished too. So, this, because that would take us, I mean, really, the bulk of where the ugliness of Chatham Road, that would get all that completed. So, if you could just kind of fill us in on that.
Yeah, that's correct. We have to go through certain hoops, basically, to, for the funding that they're using through the capital bill in order to do that section. However, they still have to get that funding authorized in order to construct their portion. And they've been working on it, and hopefully, they can have it here shortly so that they can let their portion. We're working very closely with them because we want it improved. We do have an I G A with them to also provide basically a 2% interest loan in order to get it completed. And there are, I think, approximately 20,000 vehicles that use that and with a lot of it being city residents. So, it's, it's in all of our best interests in order to get the improvements done to Chatham Road, in which we're working closely with them. We do have a good working relationship with them. We did, we've done concrete patching with them, so they got our unit prices. We've done mastic patching. We repaved the Line I Road a couple of years ago, and then also did the Lincoln and Cherry Road drainage improvements too. So, so we'll continue, you know, obviously, to, to work with them in order to get their project let as soon as possible. We are helping them with the construction administration and then the construction engineering in order to get theirs done. And had, was talking with them earlier today to try to get it let as quick as possible. It may be best to bid through their, through Leland Grove, so we may come with an amended I G A, and we're working closely with them so that we can get it done as quick as possible because it's in the best interest of all of us.
And that'd be wonderful, yeah, thank you. And then, so, to be clear, we have an amendment today to add, and I just have the total amount, to change this, this total amount to be $1,788,265. So, I would like to offer that as amendment to this ordinance. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
This is on the amendment?
Yeah, this is going to be on the amendment, yes. No more discussion? So, what we'll, it's been properly moved in second to approve this as amended. So, all those...
To approve the amendment first.
Okay. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
The amendment, of the amendment?
Of the amendment, yes.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, we voted on this with the, with, as amended.
So, I'll entertain a motion.
For debate?
For debate, yes. So moved in second. It's been properly moved in second. Now to send, oh, discussion? Go ahead, Chair.
I'm going to vote for this ordinance because I gave my word to a couple Alderman I would. I can tell you that I'm reluctant to vote for any more projects in this city because of how Public Works has let me down in my ward. As you all know, I've been working on Hilltop Road for six years. Come out and take a look at it. It's a friggin' disaster. And I'm, I'm very upset about it. I talked to the Mayor about it. I can't talk to, I haven't talked to Nate about it because I haven't got any calls back, but I can just tell you this. I'm not happy. I'm going to do everything I can to vote against every project because Hilltop Road, Ward 1 is being, being neglected, and I'm sick of it. And so, I gave you my word, and I'm going to stick my word, and I'm going to vote for this, but I'm not happy.
Okay.
Alderman Williams?
Alderman McMenamin?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Alderman Redpath, and I understand your frustration. I just want to put Chatham Road in a broader context because it's, it's been a 10-year effort on my part to get it done, and it's, it's been difficult for a number of reasons because Ward 7 entirely surrounds Leland Grove. So, most of the drivers on Chatham Road, they think, hey, it's McMenamin's problem. He's not getting it done. You know, it, that road is Springfield. It's not Leland Grove. So, it's been a 10-year burden amongst my back, and we're making progress. Now, Alderman Red, Hanauer and I, four years ago, we started with improving Chatham Road because we did a mutual effort with Public Works. And so, Chatham Road to the very south, south of Wabash, it's, it's both Ward 7 and Ward 10, and we've got significant neighborhoods that, that drive into it, Westchester and to the south, Lincolnshire comes up and uses Chatham Road. So, we did the overlay about, we started going from south to north. And so, this is really the continuation of some, something that's been in the works for some degree of time. But I agree, we got to make sure everyone gets their major projects done. It took 10 years for this one, but, and all we can do is, you know, try to work together to, for the betterment of all. And I appreciate all the work that Public Works has done on this.
You're welcome. And Alderman, you can call me anytime on my cell phone. In regards to Hilltop Road, we are letting the next phase next month. We've been working on the plans. We originally had a consultant designing it. However, we brought it in-house so that we could get it done even quicker so that we could get it let this year being that second phase.
You been out there?
And then in regards to erosion control, I know we had some straw, straw lottos put up right now. Unfortunately, during construction, sometimes it gets, it gets worse, but I'll, I'll go ahead and have them put up additional control, erosion control, and I just talked to Josh Broughton about that.
The contractor dug out, the contractor dug out the ditches, and now they're full again, full mud. And there's no drainage going on out there. And you know we have erosion problem. We have a flooding problem with polisades, and now it's getting worse. And this doesn't have to be like this. If they'd done it right in the first time, the oversight of this thing has been a disaster. We had, we had to call up and get new streetlights put up. It took, I had to make 15 phone calls just to get C W P out there to put the lights up. We had, we had a car roll down the hill, and we had, then we, after the car rolled down the hill, then we put up the barriers. It's ridiculous. We don't have to, this is not the way we should be doing business.
Fortunately, we have the stage construction, and, and one of the last phases is putting up the guardrails.
You know what? I've heard nothing but excuses and procrastination and delays. That's all I've heard. I'm, I'm sick of it.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, was the motion for debate or consent?
Debate.
Debate. Thank you.
No more discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2021-252, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with the Springfield-Samen County Regional Planning Commission for the performance of transportation work under the Unified Planning Work Program from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $39,393.60, M F T Section Number 21-00300-00-ES for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2021-253, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that the motor fuel tax funds in an amount of $39,393.60 may be used for city share for planning work outlined in the Technical Work Program as required by the 1962 Federal and Highway Act stats, Springfield Area Transportation Study, M F T Section 21-00300-00-ES as amended for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
2021-262, an ordinance authorizing a contract with James D. Hawk and Rebecca S. Hawk for the purchase of real estate located 1106 and 1100, or 1,004 North 10th Street in the amount of $37,000 in closing costs and the amount of $1,500 for a total amount not to exceed $38,500 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project, Usable Segment 6, for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 General City Business, 2021-254, an ordinance approving the appointment of Alderman Ralph Hanauer to the Samen County Board of Health.
I've been asked that we, we, we hold these, I don't know how long, but it may be forever for all I know, but...
I've already been appointed.
So, you, you did a great job.
Thank you. It's going great.
We're going to have our own, our own little committee up here.
Why do we have our own Board of Health?
We can, what we'll do is try to hold both 2021-254 and 2021-255.
Yes, sir.
Just hold them. Anybody, okay, it's been second, we're here, motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned in second to hold these. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Corporation Council, is, is it a conflict of interest for these two people to vote for themselves?
No, I voted for myself.
Well, no kidding. We may be the only votes for us. Are you kidding me?
I'm not voting for them. No, but seriously, I mean, is, is there any movement happening here?
Just a quick update. The Mayor had a meeting with the Chairman and with Brian McFadden last week. We, this topic came up. They did send some information this afternoon. I haven't had a chance to look at it. So, what I'd ask would be if we hold this till next week, hopefully, we'll get this straightened out.
All right, thank you.
One way or the other.
So, that's a no.
All right. So, did we vote? So, so, we voted to keep this on hold for both of these ordinances?
They'll simply remain in committee.
Okay.
They would remain in committee.
Okay. Mr. Clerk?
2021-256, an ordinance declaring miscellaneous items as surplus property and authorizing disposal of said surplus item, items auctioned, sold for scrap or recycled.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to put this in consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2021-257, an ordinance authorizing execution of subrecipient agreement number 18-SR-0013 with Phoenix Company Center for improvements located at 109 East Lawrence Avenue, utilizing the city's community development block grant funds in an amount not to exceed $165,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion? Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. And I see we have Jenna Cooley here from Phoenix Center. I would just like to say, first of all, thank you for the work that you're doing on this, providing a, a resource and the support in our community that, that is sorely needed. I'm very much looking forward to voting for this next week.
Thank you.
If you want to talk about what you're doing, please do. I just, I'm, I'm really excited for this.
Does anybody have any questions? The one thing that I wanted to mention is that, this is kind of a sidebar, but the, I just got a copy today. It's a rough draft of the Human Rights Campaign's scorecard for Springfield, Illinois for looking at LGBT services and, and really kind of what we have to offer here. We have the second lowest score in the state of Illinois. Our score for coming in this year is a 68 out of 100. And I just wanted to see if there would be a way that I could work, I know the Mayor and I have talked about this in the past, but just to see if there would be a way that I could work with the city and with the council to try to improve our score. There are some things on here that we could easily get our score up on if we just talked about and kind of brainstormed. A couple of things that are on here that we, we're getting zeros on, we're actually doing, so we just need to make sure we get that reported to H R C. But I would love to work with you on whatever we can do to, to improve the score.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, thank you, Chair. And we've, we've talked about that in the past, and I, I appreciate you bringing that up because I need to follow up with you on that and make sure that we do take what actions. And also, maybe not just the low-hanging fruit.
Not just what? I'm sorry?
Not just, not just the low-hanging fruit, but let's, let's make some bigger strides.
Yes, whatever I can do to help, just please let me know.
I'll reach out again.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2021-258, an or, an ordinance authorizing a purchase of 220 Avon APR gas masks from Protech Sales for an amount not to exceed $69,369 for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 2021-259, a resolution of I M R F benefit protection leave for Mike Allwood from June 1, 2003 through July 31, 2003, under the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund.
What?
Move for consent.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
It's been properly moved in second. We have discussion. Alderman Redpath.
You explain this, please.
If you, if you recall, we've done this a couple of times. The, under the I M R F, employees who are off on leave are allowed to get credit under certain circumstances for that leave, when they're off in disability leave. However, under the state law, it actually requires city council to vote on it. So, this is, we've done this, I think, twice before in the last five years, and this is simply an application process that goes to I M R F, but it requires city council approval by statute.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All them favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2021-259, a resolution of I M R F benefit protection leave for Mike Allwood from June
Aye.
Twenty twenty-one, two sixty. An ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of thirty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and forty-six cents to Anthony Burton, a city's Springfield fire captain, for settlement of workman's compensation claim for case number twenty dash W C dash zero zero eight nine five six.
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to send this to consent, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-one, two sixty-one. An ordinance to decrease the number of Class D local licenses by one for Mekong Cafe Two Incorporated, doing business as Mekong Cafe Two Incorporated, located at thirteen oh South, South Second Street.
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to send this to consent, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
President.
Twenty twenty-one, two sixty-three. An ordinance to increase the number of Class A local licenses by one for Superior Business Solutions Incorporated, doing business as Kelly's Place, for the business located eleven oh two Sangamon Avenue.
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to send this to consent, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
President.
Noted. Twenty twenty-one, two sixty-four. An ordinance to increase the number of Class A local licenses by one for Kentucky Burn Incorporated, doing business as Kentucky Burn, for business located eleven oh four Sangamon Avenue.
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Sorry, it's been moved and seconded to send it to consent, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
President.
Noted.
Any unfinished business? All the women's essential.
Thank you. Director Bottom, do we have an estimated completion date for the Walnut Street project? I'm getting a lot of questions about it.
I'll have to ask the draft, and Chair, I can get back with you.
I appreciate that. It's looking great, it's, but it's a lot of work and it's a lot going on, so, thank you.
I'll send you an update.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Crap.
Hey Nate, don't go away.
I don't know why you keep moving.
Quick question, two budget cycles ago, Alderman, Donlin, myself, I can't remember who was the third, we proposed an amendment to the budget to do planning work for North Grand Avenue, and it was mentioned at the ward meeting that we had last Tuesday that we cut that from the budget. I don't remember cutting that from the budget for this year. Can you look into that, because I think that's, it's a, it's an issue that's very important for the neighborhoods there, and I'd like to get it done, and if it indeed was cut from the budget, I'd like to do a supplemental ordinance for it, but I don't think it was cut.
No. So, we are putting out Q B S right now that I mentioned for both the North Grand and South Grand Avenue beautification, however, that was due to COVID back in, you know, that was the F Y twenty budget, twenty-one budget, I'm getting my years mixed up, but it's the F Y twenty-one budget that we had to make, make some cuts, and we wanted to obviously keep our people, our, our employees employed, so we cut a lot of the contractual services for that year.
See, I don't remember doing that. I don't remember that being highlighted in the budget or whatever, but if that's true the case, if there's no funding for it right now in this budget, I'd like to have a supplemental appropriation ordinance for that brought forward, filed by next Friday, whenever that is.
I believe we can cover within the budget at this time, and we're putting that Q B S out.
Well, I feel like I need an ordinance just to really get through, so, if I can get that, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman, Donlin.
Thank you, Chair. Director, what I, what I heard you saying is that it was an internal budget cut, not a, an official budget cut for the council.
That's correct.
Because we're trying to find a way to save money, and I think that, last year being the crazy time, to say the least, that's an acceptable answer, and I appreciate you working, like, to share the interest in getting this.
You're welcome, thanks.
Go ahead, Aldinger. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I just got a couple of things, I'm gonna zoom down real quick. We have a, a place off Weeder or Old Rochester Road or, or, or street over, I, I've talked about it a little bit about us shutting off that street, I, I've had some conversations with Daryl, I believe we're inching towards approval. This, this would be sort of going to, to Alderman Redpath's point of, of, of sort of taking a little bit long. The reason why I say that, I was riding by to go check on it today, and one of our inspectors rode out of there, so we're checking on it, but if we, I, I think we can close off that little street so we can stop chasing our tails and spending money to, to, to get that spot, it's one of our major fly dumping spaces, so if we could, if I can get a date on when we're gonna close that. Also, the, the, this, this house situation, so I, you know, I've, I've had a lot of calls from our constituents about action that we're taking, I believe it's in Ward Seven, Alderman McMenamin's Ward on, on, on a house that, it's a fairly nice house, but we have about fifty houses, twenty-five from, from Chris Richmond that he, he emails us every week, update on, and, yeah, I've started a list of, and I'm about at twenty-five myself of houses that nobody stayed in, some of them, you know, I'm thirty-five plus, and, and some of them have been empty since I've been a little kid, not only houses, but, but buildings, you know, two of them are right across the street from each other, so what I'm, what I'm looking for is, is, you know, how we can finally act on them, whether we're gonna take control of county or whatever, I'm really not trying to find them, but I, I'm really just trying to get to a point where we can see some movement on, on some of these places. I know the houses got different issues, but, but some of these buildings have just been sitting too long, and I know it's a, a corporate erection council thing and legal thing, but we really gotta put some priority on, on these houses over here, because I, I, you know, I'm running out of excuses on them, so, I just wanted to mention that, and, and Mayor, if we can, if we can make sure that we put out some publications, some news on the cannabis program that we will be releasing pretty soon, and make sure everybody knows about it, I have questions on it, so, we, we just want everybody to have knowledge of that throughout the city, and that's it, I'm done.
Alderman, Redpath.
This is a, kind of a question maybe for the mayor. Mayor, we, I keep hearing on the TV that we're, we're getting our thirty-three million dollars in federal funds, and we've talked here about programs that we're, we all like to see, have you put together any kind of plan that we can see that shows how that money's gonna be distributed? Everybody's got sewer problems, everybody's got road problems, everybody's got other problems, but I'd really like to see some kind of plan come forward that we can all discuss and make sure that we're all getting a portion of that money.
At the, well, we'll put it all together, right now we have seventeen million, a little bit over that. The one, first one out of the, as you know, per the request, the ordinance was the one point four million to reimburse the, the reduction of the fire department, and then so, it can be used for revenue replacement, but on the infrastructure side, it's just for water, sewers, and broadband, as far as that goes, so, but we will come with a formalized, you know, request, it has to come before city council with those expenditures, so that will be forthcoming. But it's based, a lot of it will be based on what we've heard through the ward plan meetings and things of that nature, and what was brought to the forefront, which sewers is definitely one of those.
And I agree with the one point four replacement back in there, because we, we need to make sure that we keep everyone safe, but we are moving in, in the right direction on negotiations on how we're gonna restructure the fire department.
It's still under, how do you want to comment on that, Counsel?
No, it's, the, the contract negotiations are proceeding in a normal fashion, the various issues that are systemic, you know, sustainability on the structure is, is in front and center in the, in the discussions that are taking place.
Thank you.
Alderman, the senseo, and then Alderman Hanauer.
Can we get an updated list on vacant lots that are for sale? I'm getting a lot of questions, and I haven't seen an updated list for a while, but people are asking for that, for community gardens and whatever they want to do with it, so I think that's an opportunity for us and, and for the people of Springfield.
Yeah, if it wasn't in neighborhood news, it'll be in next one, but it's in the rotating banner on the website, I know that for sure.
Is it? Okay.
And if you may recall, just to help maybe bring up the process again, you may recall that the council actually had approved kind of an ongoing bidding process, instead of doing it, you know, which is really, I think, worked well, so that allows the person, for example, to be able to, if they find a lot, even submit a bit now, so it's like an ongoing process, so that certainly is, has simplified it from what it was before.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. One thing I'd like to see, I, I think it protects our fire department as well as helps with Alderman Gregory's issues, as well as some of that, I think we all have some dilapidated houses in our wards at some, some point. Could we have, could we get a, a cost of what it would, what it would take to, we've got like thirty houses this year on the list to take them down, what it would cost us to take these old dilapidated houses that cannot be fixed up, you'd spend ten times the amount of what, what they're, they're worth would be if you fixed them up, but I think that we need to look at that, that might be something, an, an option to do, because as we know, we've had quite a few firefighters that, these houses end up in the winter, they catch fire, because we have vagrants in there, and they start fire to get warm, goes crazy. Inevitably, we have a firefighter that gets hurt, we pay workers' compensation and whatnot, we don't want to see that happen. I'd just like to see what it would cost us, and what, you know, is that something we could use some of the money for, because it would be good for everybody around, and it would protect our firefighters, you know, from getting hurt, so that was my first thing. Second thing, Alderman McMenamin and I have, have been dealing with some issues lately with group homes in our, in our neighborhoods. Now, I'm not, we're not against group homes in neighborhoods, we, we've gone down that road, and we understand, you know, that, that our rules, I guess we got sued and all that from way back, but, but what we, what's not fair is when the group homes do not care for the residents, and they, they end up getting out of the house, and they cause havoc in the neighborhood. I have one in Cobblestone that has been an absolute, it, it's, it's been, it, it's been terrorizing on some of the neighbors. I know Alderman McMenamin has one, I think Alderman Conley, Alderman Conley has a couple in, you know, I think we all have them, and so I would like to bring forward, I know we, we have limited jurisdiction on these houses, but I don't know why we cannot chart, we cannot look at a fine system for these houses to where if they do not control their residents, that we, the city can, can issue a fine, an ordinance violation or something like that, and I want, we really need to look at this. The police department has done, has done a great job trying to, and spent a lot of hours, at least I know in Cobblestone, I can't speak for everybody else, but they've spent a lot of hours dealing with the problem, and we had it solved, and then the group home was sold to another group home, and the resident that they had moved away, they brought back, and it was a problem again. And the hour, and so we have to go to the state to get, in order to get any work. Well, my thought is, if we can find them like it's a, like a, I don't want to call it a nuisance or whatever, under the nuisance ordinance or something, and we start chart, hitting them with a five hundred dollar fine or whatever, that's what's gonna make these companies realize they've got to do a better job, and it's, it's more for the neighborhoods than anything else. Again, I have nothing against the group homes, I have nothing against mentally ill people, but it's not fair to the neighborhood that, that this goes on, and these group home, the, the companies just, it's almost like a hands-off approach, so, that's my soapbox, so I, I, I think Alderman McMenamin and I will be talking to Mr. Zirkle about something and come forward with it, and, you know, so just wanted to bring, bring that out.
Any more new business?
That was, that was unfinished.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just a couple announcements. Thursday is the Levitt Concert Series, and afterwards they'll have fireworks through the Illinois J C's and sponsored by Paul Varne Cheek Events, so we appreciate that. And then on Friday and Saturday, there's the Log Fest. Friday goes from five o'clock to midnight, and then I think on Saturday, it's noon to midnight, and they have activities for children as well as the adults downtown.
I wasn't finished.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I did skip there, so Alderman, the senseo.
Thank you. I don't know about the rest of you, but I've been receiving a lot of complaints from regarding waste management and Republic Services only picking up trash once every two weeks, and they have an automated message that comes across saying, we apologize for this, this disruption of service, but we are experiencing, experiencing a labor shortage. That violates our agreement with these two companies, and people have garbage stacked up even though they're doing the right thing, paying their bills, I don't know if they're getting prorated, but this is going on citywide, so I've had several different people reach out to me about this, and this, Lake, Lake Service doesn't seem to, Lake Area, Lake Area doesn't seem to be a problem, but the other two companies, it's the same automated message, so this is a concern. We are getting into the hot months, this trash stinks, it brings out rodents, and we can't have that in any of our neighborhoods.
Yeah, we'll call them up, have a meeting with them.
Alice, were you applauding me? I want that on tape.
Okay, so I had skipped it, jumped to new business, and I did have a, a couple of things myself. One of them deals with seniors and disabled people, so we've been having a lot of rain and storms, and predicted to have a few more, and Daryl, I guess you'll have to come up if the director left, I wanted to ask you guys if, in fact, when we have these storms and, and branches fall down, and the resident is a disabled person or a, a very senior person, I guess they called the department, it would, the, the people who answered the phone was very polite and, and very courteous, it's just that the older person didn't like what she was told, which was, well, if we have to come and do it, you know, I have to pay, and the constituent went on to explain she's on social security, she didn't do it, the storm made the branch fall, that type of thing, so I, I guess my question is, is there any kind of program or, or help for seniors and disabled people when a storm causes something like a tree branch or that kind of thing to fall down, because they can't get it moved themselves, and I guess, and I just learned this from some other Alderman, it is very expensive when you use tree companies to even cut down a tree or a branch, or, you know, it's just expensive, so.
Well, we don't have a special program or anything along those lines, however, after a storm, we will sweep around the city and pick them up, so you can call our office, then we'll make a list and give it to the garage basically to, to swing by and pick up within, within a reasonable amount of time, and then we also do have the quarterly pickup that we're trying to do to get on a standardized schedule, and that will be starting this, this August, we'll start the first full week in August on the northwest side of town, and then go to the southwest, and then the third week will be the southeast, and then the fourth week will be the northeast side of town.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and I have the second one, so you might as well stay there. So the second one deals with residents, the homes are overgrown, the trees are overgrown, you know, it's just a bad situation. The department did come out and, and cut, cut the grass, and, but they didn't do the fence line and all the other overgrown stuff, now the grass is high again. I don't know in that situation when we know there's no one in the house, if, if we don't put them on a schedule, the city put them on a schedule, because we know if no one's there in three weeks, it's gonna be time to keep the cutting going, but not only the grass every three weeks, but really, when I looked into at these two homes, the, the residents in the nursing home, and with the resident being in the nursing home, we, we don't, I mean, it put me at a loss at that point, because I have nobody to, to, you know, to talk to to say, hey, get this cut so I don't have to call your department, so have we run into this before, when the house is kind of abandoned because the person got so old, they got put in a nursing home, and then a house becomes a, you know, just sitting there for, for years and overgrown, and, I mean, how do we handle those kind of situations?
There's thirty days, we put on a thirty day cycle in which our inspectors have a list of those particular homes, and they go on a thirty day cycle. But thirty days does not mean that every thirty days, just that when they go into the area to check and see the status of that particular structure.
Okay.
So they're only, they're not only looking just for the grass cutting, they're looking for any type of things, abordings, things that may, whether it's trespassing issues, that may be trash and all those type of things.
Okay, so I'll, I'll just get you those two addresses. Okay, so, I'll just get you those two addresses then, because the people are in nursing homes, I have verified that, however, there's no boarding up of the house, and, like I said, it's overgrown, and I'm kind of concerned that that can turn into big time light, and-
What we try to do is that, for static reasons, is that we don't want every house to be boarded up in Springfield.
Okay.
But if there's an issue where the house is, when the pane or the window panes have been broken, or shattered, and stuff, that's when we would initiate a boarding, or the house has been, the door has been jarred from the structure, we would go boarding, but if we can keep the home with the window panes, it just looks a whole lot aesthetically better for the city, to have the windows there present than to have our bunch of boarded-up structures when the glass is not broken or doors have not been jarred.
Okay, so, and Chief, is Chief Winslow here, because to the same situation, so, the home, one of the homes somebody's living in, but I don't know if they're homeless or what the situat, they're not supposed to be living there, is what the neighborhood knows, but they're in there, so, I tell them, then call the police on them, you know, but Chief, I don't want to, you know, call you every week about somebody living there, I thought it was because with no boarded up, that's how they're getting in there, or breaking in there, or whatever they're doing, but these is just the real situation that I was wondering, have you guys dealt with before, and how do you handle that? Because it's a known fact that the home is abandoned, it's a known fact that the resident is in a nursing home, who has no relative yet that I can find, you know, to try to see what we're gonna do about it, so, I don't know, Chief, if it's appropriate to call the police? I know you short-staffed.
We try to work in tandem with our police.
Okay.
In situations that, and many times the police are telling us the situation of the home, and that's what we'll do with the boarding, they said, "Daryl, there's trespassing and stuff here in the home, we'll get a contract out there to board it." But as far as having someone being moved from the home, that's not within our power, we're not law enforcement, that's what we have assistance of the police.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Daryl. And Chief, so, calling you, and I know you're under manned, and there's bigger problems, but when someone does this constantly, or, you know-
So, what we need to do is, we need to get in contact with whoever the property owner is, and get a trespass agreement signed with them, since it's private property, to give us the authority to remove those people that are trespassing, and then we can hold them for criminal charges.
So, we would go to the nursing home to get this done?
Yeah, if you want to get with me afterwards, give me a call, we'll get the address, maybe the name of the person, maybe there's a power of attorney or something we can reach out to to try to address the situation.
Okay, thank you.
Is our neighborhood police officers catching these things?
Yeah, that's who I'm gonna refer to when we get it, so that's who we'll give it to. And like I said, they oftentimes escort the zoning inspectors out to those type of situations, we just have to have the legal authority there, so that's what we do to that. If it's totally vacant, totally abandoned, and there is no owner anywhere around, and it's been marked, actually prohibited, then it becomes an ordinance violation that we write up and forward up to corporation council.
Okay, and that's when the sign gets put on the-
That's after they placard it.
Right.
It's not a criminal offense, it's a civil offense, it's a city ordinance, more basic, we'll write it and we'll forward it over to prosecution through corporation council and city legal.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Alderman Redpath.
Is there someone that has a fly dumping ordinance coming in front of the city council?
We just did.
I got a call from one of the township officials and heard that we were putting together fly dumping ordinance to include confiscation of vehicles if they get caught with the fly dumping, is it?
They passed it.
Yeah, they passed last meeting.
So, that's what they were asking, because they were gonna follow suit, and I wasn't familiar with it, so that's why I was-
File a lawsuit or file a suit?
I didn't hear you.
Your mic's off.
File a lawsuit, or file, what do you mean by file a suit?
No, they want to follow our lead on the ordinance.
Oh, okay, cool, good.
If you, Alderman, if you'd like, we can forward a copy, you can send it to them, or tell us who to send it to. The mayor signed it after the last meeting.
Send it to me, please, and I'll forward it on, thank you.
Chuck, I think you were gone the night we passed it.
Yeah, he was.
Thanks.
Okay. Anything else on Alderman?
I'm sorry, I'm all over the map today, but that's been my day. If we could, just once and for all, and I've asked Director Bottom about this before, and I'm not even gonna ask him to come back up here, but a street sweeping schedule would be spectacular, so people would know to move their cars, so the whole street can be swept.
Yes.
I mean, if Chicago can do it, if large cities can do this, Springfield can do it, I know we can.
We ought to do, get-
Right?
Yes.
I believe. Do you believe?
I believe, yes.
Okay, all right, we can do it.
We'll put radar guns on them so they can catch the speeders too while they're doing.
Perfect. Fantastic, whatever it takes.
All right, anybody else?
I think everyone looks like they're speeding next to one of those street sweepers.
For sure.
Any more business, anyone?
Is this new or old? I'm confused.
Well-
We're all over the map. It doesn't matter, any business.
Any business at this point, we've kind of bounced around, I'm sorry about this.
This is probably, I could say old, but I won't, because I don't want to get in trouble, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that, like, our colleague to my right, who celebrated a monumental birthday, happy fortieth birthday, Eric.
Thank you, yes.
All right, happy birthday, Eric.
You say forty? At ten. Yeah, forty-plus, it's definitely old business. I'm happy to be fifty, fabulous.
Okay, any more business?
That'll come back on you.
Okay, we have anybody to address the council?
We do. Akash, Jazera?
I don't think he came, you know.
No one else has signed up here?
No one else? Any executive session or anything?
Uh, no, sir, not to see.
Anybody out there that needs to address the council?
Yeah, I can, I'm here. Yes, sir.
Come up to the mic, please.
Okay, you mentioned about the marijuana money, but I didn't hear anything about the homeowners. Twenty percent was supposed to go to the homeowners.
Please state your name for the committee.
Eighty percent was supposed to go to the business. Okay, I'm a homeowner on the east side. I've been trying to get in touch with the Alderman, which is in Ward Two, which I haven't had any success getting in touch with him, so I don't know if I got an Alderman on the east side or not. So, I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, when would this money be released, and as a homeowner, how would I qualify to get some of the money to fix up the home, my home? I'm on the east side.
Yeah, we'll have the process worked out right after the Fourth of July, at least by mid-July, with regards to the cannabis funds, but depending on where you live at, if you're in a-
I'm on South Grand.
What is your name, sir?
Bell.
Bell?
Yes.
If you want to give Juan Werta your address, we can look to see if you might qualify for TIF funds as well, where there's home improvement dollars for exterior improvements.
Okay, because we definitely, definitely need some, because, you know, the east side's been impacted by the marijuana, and if, you know, I keep hearing this, and I can't get no answers from the Alderman. I've been calling, 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 leaving messages, Jeanette has to text someone to get in touch with me, well, I don't have Alderman.
Yeah, what's happened is Alderman, the Alderman forwarded the information to Office of Planning and Economic Development, so we have a running list of all the inquiries, so you'll be the first to receive the information.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, who do I leave my information with?
Juan Werta, he's right there, back there.
Okay, all right, yes. Okay, well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No one else? We got executive session?
Motion, sure.
No executive session?
Okay.
Intended motion to adjourn.
Was the move?
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Gregory.
I just want to say, just a heartfelt, you know, if everybody want to call former Alderman Frank McNeil, he's gonna kill me for saying something about this, but I think it's important, his house did catch fire, and him and his family is displaced and have been displaced, I've been staying with my dad for a while, but, you know, it's sort of hurting, because he may have to leave the east side, you know, he may not be able to rebuild that house, and, you know, I just wanted to say that, and he cares deeply, you know, about his location he stayed in for a long time, and he's sort of rambled up right now, but he's still doing his thing, and I just wanted to, you know, from a seat that he formerly held, and help get here, just, you know, send my condolences out to him, and, you know, my auntie and my little nephew, little cousin, so, that's it.
Thanks for letting us know.
Go move.
So, it's been moved second to adjourn. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Happy Pride Month.